November 19th, our work session, Roll Call. Ms. Shaw, it's tonight, Texas. The council also want to make motion. I'm in recognition that our city clerk, Senator Taylor, is out for following up. Having some heart surgery and also let's keep them in our thoughts and approval. But we're glad to have him stay up until noon. We're missing a page, he's not in the city, so we'll need to fix him. Okay, our order of business is approved the agenda. Of course, we're not going to do any action tonight. So we will point out if there's any errors. If there's any problems with the agenda. Any problems with the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we're gonna, I ask for an addition.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the agreement between Robert Sillman and Gary and the city of Gary, with the wastewater treatment plant.
That's gonna go under new business?
Yes, sir.
You have the amended agenda tomorrow?
It's already added in here.
No, certainly not added, I'll wait until you offer.
Be under new business?
Yes. And closes, it got me, y'all.
That's why, I think that's a good point. I think we can take off Mr. Brown and maybe move that till next month, she's not here. And add.
This is probably all.
Yeah, or, you know, Add's not here either, so do you want to move that to next month's agenda? Or?
So you would not be here tomorrow?
Yeah, Add's at town on vacation and Mr. Brown will not be there. So do you want to move it to next month or to?
Yep.
The first of the year? Let's just take that off.
Uh, could be up to Brown and.
Our city attorney, yeah, so Add is out of that.
Okay. So we put the Robert Sillman here and under page?
Yes, sir, please replace it with that.
Can you enlighten us on that more?
Uh, yes, sir, there's also a copy.
So you're gonna send us paper here, but? Anything else with the agenda? Okay, moving on, next item, the approval of Minnesota previous meeting, October 15th work session. October 16th, Greg has called me. Is there anything in there we need to look at or question or comment about? Okay. There's the public hearing tomorrow night? Okay, thank you, sir. Now, we have the pictures of tonight. This, uh, we asked you to come forward, state your name, your address loudly so that our city clerk can copy it down. And I asked you to try to state the three minutes. Ms. Sheila Noddy.
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you to the mayor of City of Gary. Attorney Brown. My question was concerning the, um, the old Plagueville building. Here on Waterfront.
Yes, sir.
And when did the city sell, when the city sold that property?
Are you talking about the scheme building? I mean, the, uh?
Plagueville.
Jail, yeah, with the jail.
Adam Strang building, okay. Got it, Adam, okay.
The jail building, you said?
Right.
Well, the jail.
No, 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 the Adam Strang building, no, you're wrong, she's talking.
No, but you know what, the old Plagueville.
You said Flackyr's Crab Plant is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
The one that they just tore down?
Just tore down.
Yeah. Okay. I'm looking for a transcript.
Wasn't that one of the historical buildings?
The question is, was it a historical building? No, ma'am, the city didn't sell it.
Okay.
No, we didn't have any.
It wasn't under the historicals.
No, ma'am, that was a private owned business, private owned building and property. And you notice, uh, they've been held up for a long, for a good while on all that construction and everything and all the, the city really didn't have anything to do it all up.
What's your question about that, though, period?
It was, it's, it's.
It was historic.
It's, it's like a historic, right? My building, so my concern was just, you know, whether it was under the historical year.
See, owned that one there, the reason I knew it wasn't historical, because it had been brought up before that with the destruction that's going on down, now it's carrying up historical areas and all, but that ground's already been disturbed before when that building was built and everything. So far, all your old history and everything is already pretty much hauled off or covered up.
But a lot of people are asking the same question.
Yes.
How this, she asked, did the city? And the city does not own and never did own that property. As I understand it, and the city manager and the city attorney can correct me, that property was owned by the Plaguers, like you said.
Right.
It was handed over to the downtown, not the downtown, but the industrial possession.
Investor.
Not the jail building, that was sold.
That was sold property. Basically, what you had, two sections, ma'am. You had the kind of dividing line where you know the IDA building is, and that sidewalk running down there. You go over, if you're looking from 14 George into the river, go over the left just a little bit, that was solely owned by the IDA. Then from, if you continue further left from that line, that was private property. And those landowners sold that property individually to Mr. Lucas.
Okay, so that was sold by the jail building?
Yes, ma'am, exactly.
I've gone, Mr. Terry, yes, we're going.
Okay, well, that was my question.
No, we appreciate, you know, you people were especially coming forward like that. Because I told the city manager the other day that I would go on Facebook when I see my name was tagged and I look at it, but I'd get too carried away. You know, with people that really didn't have their facts straight and it kind of rubbed me wrong, so I quit doing that. And that's why I asked for people, and I've talked to y'all, I've talked to Mr. Edgar, just come to the meeting and let's discuss it here. And that way we can get the straits out. Because a lot of people on Facebook is making a comment, don't even live in Georgia. And I found that out. And so the only way to really get the truth is to show it right here in the meeting. Because if it's set here in the meeting, we got a city attorney, a city manager, just gonna make sure that what we tell you is correct.
And that's my.
And that, and I try to be as transparent as possible. I said we need a meeting, I've had two meetings on that development down there. And I try to be transparent to the whole council as possible. And by you come to the city council meeting here in public and ask a good question, we can't be more transparent than that. Thank you, we appreciate it. Any comments, questions? Yes, sir.
Could you, please?
Yes, sir.
Just clarify, uh, what she was leading, possibly leading to, uh, reading the code of ordinances for the city. There are about a dozen structures that have been designated as historic buildings by the city. That was not one of them. Uh, the Strang Building plus about six or eight more. Uh, that was not one of those. And also, that, that area was not part of the designated historic district. But if you want, if, if you think it should be one, or if you want a historic building should be designated as such, you pray before the city council and they can come like that. Does that make sense?
Those don't know if Mr. Paul, if he is on our planning's on the board. He's already dug into it, uh, and found everything.
It can be done, you just.
And he is our, uh, he is our protector of the history group. We come, so if it involves the history, he's, he's gonna cop it. We appreciate that.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, uh, Ms. Wick. And yours is, uh, sent to get you to the order room?
Yes. Bringing to everyone on the town, my name is Gwendolyn Mitchell, maybe. I reside at my grandmother's home at 1100 Old River Road. My grandmother passed away three years ago. So I keep the home up. On Thursday, other residents in the community started to smell a stench. A stench of septic odor, okay? On Friday, I had noticed it during the week, and we've had it since 2009. It has been an issue. Under Brett Cook and Kelly Scraps, there was a $1.3 million grant awarded to the city to fix the issue. And our community and my name was used for this money. This issue was never resolved. They came back and said, there was not enough money. Now, from then on, we have had this issue. People are sick. My mother, my sister, my grandmother, not my sister, my mother, my aunt, and my husband, um, their brother, other relatives, many people on Old River Road have died, okay? And you, nobody's gonna tell me because of what I study and what I read, and I haven't been to Harvard, but I know what I read. This is not contributed to their death. Okay? I'm sick. I've been in ER three weeks ago Sunday. The doctors did not know what was wrong with me. My blood pressure shot up, shot up to 280 to 8 over 190. I was not placed in the hospital. I was just given a medication to bring it down. I still don't feel good. I will make a medical report of my medical condition and anybody else who has one. And I will keep it as a log. Now, I don't know anything about plumbing. I have no idea. Councilor Lotson came out, Mr. Wayne came out on the night I called him around sixish at a great point. He was very patient, he walked the line, he, uh, he assessed the problem, he smelled it. It was there, it was very apparent at my home. Not for knowing, I had other calls. I knew other people had the problem. Some people have left their homes. I have not slept in my grandmother's house all weekend. I'm not gonna sleep in there this week. For my safety. We have children that live in this community. They may not be sick now. One day, my mother told me while she was sick, on her sick bed, I said, Mommy, how long have you smelt this? She said, Gwendolyn, I can't even remember. I have smelt it for so long. Everyone died of lung problems. Septic backup has caused lung problems. Nobody's taking this very serious. Everybody laughs and giggles when I come in here like it's a joke. It's not a joke. It's not a joke to wake up feeling bad, to cough all night. It's not a joke. Children are in the neighborhood. We have one family member that has a preemie baby that's only six weeks old. Now, I don't know what has been done about the problem. It doesn't smell as bad, but the toxins are still in the air. Because when I walk in my grandmother's house, and if I'm in there more than an hour, I can taste it in my mouth. So I'm not gonna stay in there. We are not, this is not right. This is environmental health. It's been environmental health since 2009, when Kelly Brook and Kelly Scraps and Brett Cook were on this board. They were very aware of it. They used us. I'm tired of being used. And nobody in this city likes me because I speak for my community. I will always speak for my community. Liking me is not what I want to die and be known as. I'd rather be dead and known as fighting for my community.
Ms. Quinn.
I'm asking for you guys to help us.
The first time I'd like to ask you is, who's been laughing at it? I'd like to know that personally.
I, I, I won't even call that.
But you do like on this board?
No, nobody on this board. Nobody on this board, not you.
Okay.
Okay, so.
We want to make sure.
To move on, to move on, that's, that's not, I mean, that's not a matter. Yeah, God is with us everywhere we go, and that's how we survive on Old River Road.
Have we checked into the sewer, I mean, his first stop, or just wanted to make people sick?
I had a, uh, three conversations earlier before the meeting to find out, you know, kind of what was going on. Wayne went down there and, uh, there was no blockage or anything of that nature. We discussed, you know, maybe it was an odor from a lift station that was coming up in there. Not up in there, that's the wrong way to say it. What I'm saying is that the, the lift station maybe had emanated some sort of odor and it went to the neighborhood and consequently would end up in people's houses. It's sort of like we have a, uh, the same situation, uh, very often on Forest Street West. Is it's a major lift station, major inlet for a lot of solids and things of that nature. So I asked them to go out today, and they did do a deodorizer on that particular lift station, but we'll certainly further investigate, you know, whatever shoot like, to, to see what's going on.
Has anybody else come and complained about that area?
Uh, no, certainly not to my knowledge.
What I'm trying to figure out, pinpointing down, is, y'all have been here.
We have been here, but it's, it's in our.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's what I'm asking. Yeah, what I'm trying to do, the reason I asked you that, is I'm trying to pinpoint a certain area. Because, uh, I'd like to get somebody to check it to make sure it is the sewer, or be something else, because everybody knows that if you travel in Norfolk on 95, there about Liberty County, Bryan County, and Frederick over here, you can smell a strong, but if that is marsh smell and you're thinking, it'll really get you. And that's what I want to find out. If it is the backside of marsh, then we need to find out what we need to do to that, maybe we're tripping the wrong thing by doing the sewer line. So, uh, we need to get maybe with Eric Rumber, the, and let's find out what, what it's called, because I'm.
I came, I came over this, uh, this morning through Mr. Lotson, actually. And, uh, I mean, I'm glad you're here.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm really am, so we can at least go out there and have a look at this thing again and see what's going on. I'm not here to blow sunshine, I mean, I'll tell you what my findings are, and I don't know what they will be because I haven't been there.
Because you're not going to my house. It's not my house. Probably every house in the community. Some people are immune to it, some people are afraid, afraid of what, I don't know, because we've had this problem walked out from beginning to end. Eric Rumber is aware of it. He came out and walked the community with us when Brett and Kelly were here.
What did, if you don't have a ask, what did Eric do?
Eric told me that since I have called him, he will now call you guys.
Okay, well, I'm thinking, maybe we just, get him, we get the state monitors or something in, yeah, we can set up and see if it is the problem in the backside of the marsh, or if it is our sewer line, because we need to get that took care of, and that's nothing to laugh about, beyond.
When will you do it? When will you do it? Give us a date.
Well, that's what, we gotta get with Eric Rumber, we gotta get with the state, and so. I'd like to jump on it tonight, to be honest with you, because I don't want to see nobody suffer. But, uh, we deal with the state. We will, and we, we appreciate you bringing our attention again.
Ms. Gwendolyn, as passionate as your plea was, you will not be forgotten. You will not be laughed at.
And we don't.
You will not be forgotten by this council.
And we don't hate you because you brought it up, let's know when we, we find that thing. Mayor, we're kidding.
Yeah, uh, they see they mentioned your name, and Ms. Quinn knows, uh, myself personally, because I was assigned to this task, I think, in 2012.
Councilor Lotson did come out, as soon as I called him.
And Ms. Quinn also was assigned to it, so I personally have been to her house, her grandmother's house, found that's some good information. We laughed a little bit, some of the sewer, uh, the places that she actually can throw down into real person. And I believe, I didn't see it the first time, I mean, this time, she says that they did open one of the manors. Uh, I did go there, I think it was a cousin or a relative, and with her permission, I waited until she come home, because I wanted to go in her house too. Uh, had construction, I was getting familiar with the old gym of the private school, and we spent $200,000 and the people had the sewer line. It was amazing, I couldn't understand why the sewer. We paid them all this money, they had the sewer line ran in the building. So it didn't go where it's supposed to go. So we looked into all of that, slight sewer problem there, but I think that's something we can fix. I did, I smelled something, I wanted to make sure I smelled something. I did with the wind blow. I think having Eric, I searched again since about 2012 on the health. So we can get him back. We have discussed this before in Ms. Quinn's defense, so that's why she's built up there. We definitely, this is not the first rodeo to this council. And, uh, so the community's gonna have to help us, uh, get the experts to see if there is something. But unfortunately, the smaller experts we've been bringing, they couldn't find anything. I just want to be open with it, and then it kicks up again. So we need everybody to help us in that area.
The worst error, I mean.
Which is something that maybe.
If it had not been in terms of our property here, the worst error. I would not advise anybody on Old River Road to sleep in at home, I really wouldn't. I would not sleep in my grandmother's house.
Well, this, uh.
I think she has a good point.
Yeah, Mayor, what about, I'm not sure if there's grant money for this type of situation in the middle or not, but what about?
Now, there was one of that, the backflow prevention valve.
Oh, I.
I mean, I'm sure some of these are some, are elderly sewer connections in older homes. I mean, I've minded, you know, some, I've minded that, what about a, a backflow prevention valve?
I think it's gas, or personally, off the top of the head, I think it's gas that comes in her house.
Okay.
And, uh, some of the other houses, due to the age of construction in those homes, is just like you said, it may not have a backflow in there to stop that gas from coming back.
And there are some, I hate to say it, and I'm probably, if I get it, it's something you can, some people's sewer, it's not a definite problem.
Well, that's right.
I said it.
I'm trying to make excuses, I'm talking about that, no, we're.
I wonder if there's a landowner who can get to assist the installation of that, some of their homes?
Well, that's what came over Kelly and Chris, when they came back with not being enough money. They did come in and say that back then, when they were fixing these homes, tying them into the city, there were no certified people here. They were using father's son, um, you know, that's how they were working together. Father was teaching the son, and they were carrying it on like that. And that's how we got our homes tied into the city. So there was, they, they recognized that there would be no doubt that some of these would probably take more than enough money to fix.
I'll tell you what, I think I've known some of these grants before, I know exactly what you're talking about right now. That is, is that they used the customers for the amount of hookups to justify the new sewer line to run down there for the, for the grant, because you had to have a certain number of hookups to be on a particular line or to run it. So to follow, piggyback on what she just said, is that probably what she said, basically, father and son kind of deal, may not have put those backflow preventers on there for those septic stuff coming up. So that's a good place to start, right there, is who they got.
Well, seeing under new business, we're talking about the, uh, engineer with the wastewater treatment consultant on this is something probably.
I'm gonna put Robert Sillman here, not in fact. I'm just looking at.
Is it, is it true that you guys have no archives from any evidence that took place? A lot took place.
I don't know, I've not had an opportunity to look for it.
We've got it, but it's all.
What maybe we can do, if it's that earlier, and that's just calling it good and bad, but it's wonderful, uh, with grants, I've worked a lot with that. You cannot throw away certain records. And the good news, we have a safety net on the other side. If we receive those grants, a quick as archives, I'll keep it there and use to find that out, and then find out that government entity. From Ms. Quinn, and don't quote me, I'm only going with what she said, that probably it was supposed to help with the septic tank. For the last two years, uh, I took the risks of falling in Grandma's sewer, and we went in it again, and I was glad there was somebody else there, because there's a case about fell in. We lifted it, because I was thinking it was gonna back up in there. We opened it, uh, the stench was not there, it's not backing up, and that part of the septic tank at Grandma's house. But how many more of those septic tanks that, uh, people can fall in? Because I understand that Grandma's supposed to help fill them up.
They were supposed to seal them.
I know Grandma's on it, it's not, it might be sealed, it might be sealed so the sewer won't go in it.
Right.
But it definitely, you could fall in.
You might blow them.
I, yeah, I blew them back.
So we will.
And some of them here have been driven over, when Eric went out with us, they've been driven over. So they're gonna tell it what happened, for Eric to see about from where, when, you know. But the stench, it does still come from those tanks.
Can you all help us, I'm serious, can you all help us? You may have a neighbor that sewer might be running out. It could be even a senior that don't know the old type, it was supposed to disconnect it out, they didn't. Mostly when the water, it's a lot of rain, it has a way of gravity, gravity flow, water will go where it's released, and if it's going back into the septic tanks.
And we get so much rain, and rain is usually when it's at its worst.
Yes, sir, what's your next?
I have something I heard, it's Ray Brown. Uh, one hand, this is 200 Road, providing shelter, man, there's an odd stain, I see it here.
Okay. And all that's going, pretty much go along with it, and we don't, give us to at least, uh.
I didn't hear that.
Sir?
I didn't hear that.
He's talking about the ice and everything with him behind, uh, that's the old service that, or that little. Uh, give us to what, first of the year, we should, maybe that's.
It gonna take that long?
Man, no, we're, we're working on it, we're just saying that long, but we're, because like I said, we're working with state, and we're working with other people and all.
Mr. Mayor, make a claim, so, because I know all of the neighbors that are here.
Yeah.
So I was saying earlier today at my house, is that, uh, because I don't want, because like you said, it's very emotional, so I don't want them leaving out saying that, boy, we're gonna have this thing fixed, Jim.
No.
And we're gonna check with the experts and see, because we can't find it, we don't know what.
I don't say, but.
If Ms. Quinn knew where it was, she could have told me two years ago, it would have been fixed. She doesn't know.
And it's only a month.
I don't know anything about it, I don't know.
Your first year, be here a month.
I think we're gonna try to address it for sure. We're our best. We're not gonna.
I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Tell, what address did you need or someone?
Um, I was just gonna try to pull our words, see maybe that would help.
1100 Old River Road.
Well, I got hers, what about you two?
This is Katie.
1118?
Yeah, Old River Road.
And she, her, she didn't get the sign, but she wanted to speak next. Katie Carter.
Miss name?
Katie Carter.
Katie, Katie Carter.
Well, now, next, what, the next on my list is Mr. Mark Yager.
Oh, I took a good time.
I had to go on my list, so you. No, we'd like to speak rather than him.
Yeah, okay.
But anytime anybody wants to speak, I'm a favorite.
Yeah, people that.
I would use it.
Okay, okay, go ahead, ma'am, go ahead.
Well, basically, generally, I'm, I'm in agreement with what she was saying, and it's true, and it's getting stronger, and it is causing, um, I think breathing problems, to be honest. And she was telling us about it for a while, and it calmly goes, but lately it's just been lingering. And it is, it is very strong, um, it's in the house, and it is nothing you can do, it has to die down. You could spray, wipe, mop, do everything, it's not going nowhere until it's died down. And you take days, not just, um, a day, it takes days for it to actually die down. And so what she was saying, it is true, there's other people that can come and speak on, on her behalf, and that I shouldn't let you all know what's going on on Old River Road. And, um, you know, she did call me and let me know to come to the new, so that's why I'm here. And it is true, and it's been going on for years. And that's all I have.
And as it gets colder, the air is gonna get thicker.
Yeah, and real thick, and it's not just lying out, it's just lingering, you gotta walk through it, and it's all, all through the house.
And you get afraid of showing up for the holidays.
Yeah. You know how that, you know? And you can't get the odor out, you know, people come in, they're obsessed, you know?
Which will, you, we're gonna help you, we're gonna help you.
So, it's true. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right, this one, Old River Road, I just wanna get, um, regenerate what you said. Now, personally, you know, we expect you to get back with us. Now, personally, you know, we expect you to get back with us.
Yes, ma'am.
You will be here.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you feel that a day at a time, and this problem shall be solved. If you cannot solve every action, the renewal, the sewer system out of Old River Road. Because one thing must be done.
Well, we can't do that.
Well, it could be done.
Then what, then where, where does the sewer go?
Put that whole, um, cooking door job, if you want.
We got it down there.
But, um.
But if we take that away, then you won't, you won't have any one of our.
But time, sometimes, ah, it's a script, and it's pretty dense.
Yes, ma'am.
Money does that for things. So we might have to redirect out on it.
Yes, ma'am.
And see what, uh, till we get.
And that's what I said, I wanna make sure it's not marshmallow, because like I said, travel north on 95, Gil Smith. And I wanna make sure if our sewer, we need to pinpoint where it is and take care of it. That's what he said, that we're gonna get our, our engineers on it, and, uh, see what we can get there.
So if we quit that by, you know, in January, do you want us to come back here?
We can't tell you, that's what I said, it's gonna take me that long to find out. At least by.
The Federal Reserve Preservation Act, believe those were rewritten in 1999, so that would have been this agreement. You gotta realize this agreement, George H.W. Bush was president on this agreement, really. Okay. Uh, so when the agreement was written and signed by those parties, the, what, what the courts have done, I mean, it's my job to render it, I mean, in the end, Judge Wood's opinion would be what mattered. Somebody decided to try the courts, it's the federal court. But I do the best I can do, I try to research the best I can do, and render its opinion. Uh, and what the courts have looked at, uh, when that provision is violated on C5, is whether the intent of the agreement, what was the intent of the agreement presented into it? And they've looked at history of enforceability since then, to determine if that still complies with the original intent of the agreement. So you know what we've got, and we've got skipper's. We've got the condo, we've got the Broad Street development, we've got multiple developments that would've followed within that area, and the MOA is not enforced. And I think when skipper's came around, that was about a dozen years after this was implemented, 2003. So we're now, you know, we're now 27 years after the implementation. I mean, I don't know, Judge Wood would make the final decision, but, I mean, I believe she would have a hard time enforcing that under current case law, and under existing regulations that require termination date. I mean, Mr. Yeager's pointed out before, I'm human, I've been wrong before, and I'll be wrong again, I'm human. But I rendered the best opinion that I could at the time, and I stand by that opinion, I think it's correct.
Well, if, if you feel that the courts frowned on long-term contracts, and you also feel that the courts, if they respect the parties' abilities to contract, and normally.
I didn't say that, you put words in my mouth. I didn't say they frowned on long-term contracts. I said they frowned on agreements with no expiration date.
Well, it.
I think if their agreement lasts 40 years, I mean, I think, I think we have a different evaluation on MOA.
But the, the parties, my point is, the parties, uh, knew that going in, and agreed to it. So, uh, why shouldn't they be able to, uh, execute the contract that they all agreed to? Because that's my own question.
Uh-huh.
Now, I, I just, one other thing about skipper's, I don't see skipper's included in the, in the, in this contract. Uh, skipper's, I believe, would be down, closer, outside of Phase 4, and not included, Phase 4 would probably include just the, uh, and laws and, and the street. So, you know, I think it's been respected, and I think the four archaeology efforts are evidence that the, uh, the MOA is still in practice, and, uh, as, um, as 401 requires. So, I, I just, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts, and so, let's, let's say that the MOA is all, you know, correct and everything.
Can you, can you, I mean, I'm not here.
Well, let's just assume for a moment, uh, you could be, you know, you could be right, I'm not saying you're wrong, which you really, I mean.
I mean, I could be.
Uh, I don't expect your opinion, I just wanna, uh, you know, open the floor to the possibilities, and I, I don't have all of them, but I have a few, but, but, um, it doesn't cover, this, the waterfront part, is just a part in the overall development.
Now, before you finish, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to see if we can do a couple more minutes, and then, uh, see if we can go through it too.
Well, let's see if we round it up, ma'am.
Okay, the jellyball plant is, uh, is not inside of this property, so the question's, what, what do you do about that? I don't know, I don't want the answer. Uh, that needs to be worked out. Maybe, uh, there's a chance that the, uh, the owner would be willing to, uh, negotiate a, uh, the idea of an archaeological survey. And that, this is, uh, if you go into their next to last, their next to last document, I'm almost out. Um, this is an example of a real live project, in fact, it's a boutique hotel in Charleston. And the, uh, historic Charleston, um, foundation, uh, claims it's the most historic site in Charleston.
Have, have y'all contacted Mr. Lucas and talked to him about it?
Well, you know, that's what needs to happen, that you're, you know, you're right on the money with that. Um, and he needs to be aware of what's going on in Charleston.
He seems to be a real nice fellow, that's a sudden listen, and I would remind him if you were giving him a call, I know y'all.
Sure, I've talked to him before, I know him, uh, pretty well.
Yeah.
But I just wanna say that this is a, a real example of a boutique hotel where the developer agreed to do an archaeological study, uh, and pay for it, because he saw value in it. He saw value, uh, in the story that would come out of the archaeological work, that he could share with his guests to attract attention to his hotel, as a, as a marketable property.
Reach out to him, I think I would.
Yeah, but it's like you said, the jellyball is outside of that, so it's gonna have to be taken up with him.
That could've been doing.
Ah, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate all this information here, too. I've just noticed a few things in there that.
Just one last question, I don't know the answer, isn't you may know that, when this, all of this process started, did anyone take this information to the government or to their, and you may answer the answer.
Well, I mean, I tried to give an answer from following, uh, on certain occasions, but I think he was watching the clock, and I don't know, you know, he was about ready to retire, I never got an answer back. I really don't think they knew about it. I think it got filed away and lost, or personnel changes, and they didn't know that. So they sold the property without.
Wouldn't that be, uh, their attorney's responsibility to look?
Well, I think it's just like us, they probably came with their attention, and we came to our attention. Because, I mean, we had, we had some issues behind the record from the early 90s, we had to dig them up, and, you know.
I think, you know, I just don't think there was anything related to that, I think there was some oversight.
No, no, no.
Or overlooking, uh, I should say. And so we're in the position we're in, we're about to lose some of the most valuable historical property in there, if we don't watch out. And I frankly would expect some cooperation from the city in some fashion, I'm not asking for anybody to write a check or anything, but attention to this issue between the time of demo and the application for building permit, that's the time we have. When the permit is issued, and the foundations start to get destroyed, they go deep into the soil, the, uh, what's left will be destroyed of the archaeological.
They've already went deep into the soil from the way they have to dig from that last time, let you know, the jellyball plant.
That was a basement, but that was disturbed soil.
That was pretty deep, they went.
And that's what you expected, there's, but it's not all disturbed soil. Uh, in fact, the floor of that basement may be encapsulating some archaeological lenses below. Yeah, very deep.
We do appreciate, and again, I wanna, wanna go register, I appreciate the, the good comments that you make on the rent rate thing, instead of just jumping out, at least you do have your facts. Yes, you do have your facts, and, and we're.
We appreciate that.
We appreciate that. No, it's really, really, I'm starting again.
We watch it, we see breaks, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, we do appreciate it. Uh, am I correct, there's, uh, no visits presentation, no unfazed visits? No visits, and we're gonna amend the agenda tomorrow night to, uh, to Mr. Bobby Brown, and pledge it with the, uh, Roberts Engineering.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Also, the, next time, we're making touch of County Land Bill and Tipping Fees, we're gonna cut that.
It's, we're beginning to get charged for, uh, tipping fees from the others, which previously were not being charged tipping fees. Uh, tomorrow, I'll add in a fresh first payment, and what it's currently gonna cost us, but it's something that we need to evaluate.
Well, now, back when we were doing, uh, strategy delivery and everything, I asked questions, we walked the weekend, we were paying our city taxes, and, uh, landfill, we wanted to thank some of the city residents for getting out of our city tax, so we paying county tax, feel like everybody else. Uh, we'd like to cut that a little more.
Well, again, you know, I mean, I never really did that, but county residents aren't getting charged tipping fees, so we're all the same, put it in the county, so I never really did that, but, anyway, that's not even there anymore. And we charge the city and not charge the county.
They're talking about destruction in the landfills, we have, uh, that's.
Yeah, it's limbs and free, too.
That's what I'm talking about, it's limbs and free, not, you got this, we got picking up all the limbs and things, we're charging tippings, not for just going to land.
No, 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 this is.
No, that's for revenue, we charge this from city problem, the city truck.
That's correct.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Does the county pick up?
They're charging that.
Yeah?
No.
No, it's, I mean, they don't pick up.
People have to take it themselves, and I pay them if you want.
I mean, people, we play it.
Well, I've got.
Your trap, huh?
If you're all like it, you did.
Yes, I do, yes, ma'am. Is that your trap, huh?
No, that's yours.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Do you have another copy of that?
Uh-huh, well. Um.
I think you got it. You got her, huh?
Do you want a copy of MOA? Do you want a copy of MOA?
I'd like that one.
Yeah, we, we get your copy, we'll get your copy.
All right.
Thank you.
Here.
We'll get your copy in a minute.
You want?
I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll save mine.
That's good.
Okay, so, uh, tipping fees, this one thing, we, there is no missing weight, especially at certain residences.
And that's an additional cost that's probably gonna require our budget amendment, uh, I mean, this is.
That's your goal, the taxes.
But give, give estimation of how much, I know you said you're gonna give.
Between, uh, probably three, three to seven thousand dollars a year.
And we're already paying for it, and with our county taxes, so why would we have to pay again?
That's a question that I need y'all to.
I mean, that, I understand from a contractor's point of view, but that is interesting. I mean, you know, you got, I mean, that's what the law calls it, the law calls it duplication services. And municipalities get, you know, their citizens get bill of throwback from county note rate when they provide a service that's also provided county. For instance, we have a, we have a, a, an excellent police department, we patrol our neighborhoods, we have a state city. We're paying the exact same portion of the county's note rate for sharing of carpooling services as the county does. And that, that's what the law looks at. Councilman Keane, I know is nodding his head, he's been, he's been on this for a while, but, um, and I, you know, I think they're aware of it, and, uh, I think they're aware of it, and have expressed that in Mr. Sweeney in the past.
Hey, this is, this, specifically Mr. Keane, and Mr. Lots, well, shoot, really, all y'all, but more globally. Uh, my point is, is that this is gonna, it's gonna require our budget amendment, and it's, uh, an extra cost that we did not anticipate. So either, we need to look at the whole program as a whole, as to what the city does, do we, is that cost passed on to city residents? Is it passed on to county as far, or, uh, as far as the miller rate production? Is where do we review that money, is gonna be the big question.
Well, same level, we're being charged twice for it.
Yeah.
We paying for what our county does, and then we having to pay it again.
All right, y'all know me, I'm.
Oh, you're, you're.
Okay, if I was in the county, hear me out first, if I'm in the county and I take my limbs to the landfill, do I have to pay?
Yes.
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 Okay, okay, I do have to pay if I'm in the county, all right then?
They just started this, right?
Okay, now, the whole time, we did not have to pay. Every, I keep saying this, every inch of the city is in the county. The way we're set up, you have to pay city taxes, and then you have to pay county taxes. This thing of separating us, uh, who's on first, I always get confused with that, because we're in, we're in the county, there's no doubt. Because if you don't pay them taxes, we all know they set up a rule, they'll take you out. But you're in the city, and you don't pay your taxes, they take you out. We got two people coming at us, people that's outside of the city limits only have one person, so why do we have to? I don't know if we're the problem, but I, I don't know.
It's a new land, it's a new, brand new landfill that they have to do.
Yeah.
They have implemented that charge for anybody and everybody, and probably getting a better deal.
Oh, no, we understand that, that's just always been their argument, is why we're on, one of the only municipalities in the area that didn't get a bill of throwback for duplicating services. County's always said, well, this is why, because we don't charge it immediately. Well, now, we make our, so why does the city residents have a lower county tax rate? And he admitted.
That's all we ask, I'm not asking anything major here, we're just asking a simple thing, because it is the city. A lot of things that we do in the city, we do take for granted for, but it is, it is a service that we, just like picking, picking this up.
Well, y'all picking it solidly. Thank you.
That's been brought up before, it's been brought up before, after the building, okay?
Anyways, additional costs that I want to make y'all aware of, by no means a flat out of county, because they've done some improvements down there. Mayor's trying to find a way to pay for it, so I'm just letting you all know what's headed down the road, if you need some good advice.
How many, how many of us on the council have been out to the new, um, to the new dump station, the new landfill? Oh, it's old, man.
That was old, and I'm not knowing the name on it.
Yeah, yeah, really. And, and I, I agree, like, there.
Is it nice?
This landfill's not gonna last that long. I mean, I, I don't know what their projected time is, but at a certain point in time, the city and the county has to understand that this landfill's gonna go away, and we're gonna have to figure out, from the city and the county, to figure out what to do with this, this trap. That's gonna be a bigger issue than the tipping fee, but.
And that's why they're charging the tipping fee. If you go sit in the county commission meeting, they're having to start charging the tipping fee, so when that regular municipal landfill closes, you gotta either build another one, they do, or you're gonna ship it out, and that's gonna cost yours, so.
We don't ship that, just like. Yeah. We just, we know we gotta pay, it's just that we need to.
Uh, so we are gonna discuss this tomorrow night?
Yes, sir.
Discussion, aren't we? Okay, next up, uh, Mayor's approval for the clutter property on Leland Drive.
Uh, yes, sir, it's a, uh, a lot, it's down there by the, uh, ball fields, the red ball fields. Bottom line is, it backs up against wetlands, and there's also a sewer pipe, uh, reducing the size of that lot. Therefore, they're asking for their square footage to be diminished on the house from, I think it's 1100 to 900, I know it'll be 900, but the bottom factor, uh, came with approval from Brad and our planning committee.
I thought we lowered our, uh, members' square footage to 1000.
It could be 1000, I'm telling you.
Oh, yeah, so they, they wanted 1000.
The bottom line is 1000.
And, and this was already approved by, by the council?
Yes, sir.
So this is just a, I mean.
No, it's a recommendation.
I don't have any problems with it.
It's a recommendation, plan and zone.
Well, it's a recommendation, but still.
That's why the county's 900 foot, right?
I think.
I think the county's 900 foot, am I correct on that?
I think you're correct, but, um, I know they, I know that, um, a couple of people have asked for.
Well, it does take a while, I mean, it's only, what, 756, but. Oh, so we just, now we take action on that tomorrow night?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next one is pointing new plan and zoning board member, and we have, what, four or five being on that already?
Uh, I've got really, uh, two submitted, it is Mr. Wellen, remember him?
Richard.
Yes, and then, uh, Mr. Raggedale, and if y'all had any others?
That's right, one, one with Drew.
Yes, all of them, Drew, so as, as far as I'm concerned, you have Raggedale and Wellen. And I'm gonna submit it later in the morning.
Okay.
And then Mr. Green. And we'd appreciate your appointing me on the board.
We advertised for that in the background?
We did.
Did we give a cut off date?
I'm sure we did.
We got to run it three times, everyone up three, okay?
I don't, I think we can believe the athletes.
We're just pretty sure that's what we're gonna do. Anyone, you're gonna tell those people.
Okay, so we'll take, we will take action on that tomorrow night?
Yes, sir.
Next is, uh, notice of cancellation of order title maintenance contract, we'll take action on that also.
Yes, sir, it's a whole agreement, uh, I think it's 1998, it was a new agreement. Y'all already are getting to a new contract with a different company, that's why your tag is so shiny and pretty right now. So, no big deal there.
And then we'll go into our council report, and like I asked the citizens, I asked each and every one of us, let's try to keep it, uh, pretty good. Unless it's a good ad boy, then. You guys have anything else?
Let's just make it as a little. Let's just make it a little shorter than this meeting here, because we are gonna do an executive session, correct?
Uh, that would happen, like, session, Dub.
We're gonna do it, we're gonna do the planning and zoning.
Yeah, thanks for that.
What do we have to do with the second test?
You did a little more, okay, I got you, nothing else, that's right. For the deliberation, yeah, but both have to take it.
All right.